Hey, can one of you guys say something? I don't think I can hear you.
You're not. Nobody's speaking yet.
Can you hear us, Liz?
Perfect. Thank you.
Start. Yeah, let's go. You can join.
So we start.
Council will go ahead and call this main order for the record. It is July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two at four thirty-four P. M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Byrne. Councilwoman Burrow. Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton. Councilman Hoagland. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move adoption of the agenda as published.
Have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. First item up is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent agendas. Are any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Guys have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will move on to department commission reports. First item up is item fourteen, the eighty county Board of Commissioners, eighty county proposed impact fees. Invite Mr. Rutherford up to the podium.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me. Steve Rutherford with the Ada County Commissioners Office. I have Leon Letson from our Development Services Department and our director, Sean Rain. Hopefully can answer all of your questions tonight about the proposed impact fees. We are back after a few months. We've got a revised CIP for the EMS impact fees. The old CIP referenced Station Seven. And so we've generalized that a little bit and updated that CIP. Hopefully that was provided to you so that you can see it. You all, I guess, in explanation. County launched on our impact fees some time ago. We have had a board change. Actually, we've had a couple of board changes. And so between working with the cities, because we have to get, you know, every, every city on board, and working with the new commissioners to get them on board. We are, we, we've been at this a little while. And you all got way ahead of us on Station Seven and Eight. So hopefully this will take care of that. Again, we revised that CIP as it relates to the EMS. And I have Sean Rain here to talk to you about what's happening with Seven and Eight. I think you are aware, but I'd like him to come up and tell you and then have him stand for questions as it relates to those two facilities.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for having us out this afternoon. Chief Bloom and I have been working on plans for co-location at Station Seven and Station Eight. Many of you probably saw I was out of the groundbreaking ceremony for Station Eight and got up and talked about the cooperative effort. Basically, the, the tenants behind the, the, there is a draft agreement that has been sent to the, the city attorney's office. But basically what we're looking at is seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that would come out of my fund balance as it stands now. That would go towards Station Seven, then another seven hundred fifty thousand towards Station Eight. You know, the terms on the agreement, we're still working through, but it, it would basically be a kind of a long-term lease agreement over a period of time, ten to twenty years, that we would basically lease that space. But the, overall, the idea is that co-locating with the fire departments is smart for us. It saves taxpayers money, allows us to maximize those resources. And it also improves the relationship between my department and the fire department. When we're living in the same station twenty-four hours a day, having meals together, responding on the same call together, logically, our relationship just gets that much better. It's really a pretty simple agreement. We did base it loosely on an agreement that we have with the Kuna Fire Department. A lot of the things we were able to take out of there, a lot of the details that we needed for Kuna. So I, I believe it's a fairly simple agreement. Mr. Nary would certainly know better than I am how simple it is, but and with that, I would, I would certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
So does the structure work that if, if this were to proceed and the city collects impact fees for these future stations, does that intended to replenish the funds provided for Seven and Eight?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. Yes and no, not specifically for those to replenish the funds for those stations. Right now, we historically have had to save up fund balance to be able to do any kind of capital project. One good example of that is the station that we have at Eustick and Linder, Medic Three-Six. That was paid by cash, you know, out of fund balance. And, and so as building costs have come up so much, it, it's becoming harder and harder for us to save that kind of money to be able to build a station on our own. And so that doesn't mean that we won't do that again in the future. I, I think, you know, plans for further growth, somewhere along the Kuna Meridian, Kuna Meridian Road corridor out south would make sense for a station placement, since we do cover both districts. It minimizes the, the risk of an ambulance being pulled from Meridian into Kuna. And we do provide the transport service in Kuna now, which certainly helps from dragging a, a unit out of Meridian to go down to Kuna. So but more along the lines of, of planning for future growth. If that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Chief, I'm just curious, you know, looking at the document you've provided us and showed proposed station locations. Is that, station locations take that into consideration, or will there be adjustments by co-locating?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, there probably will be some adjustments just based on growth and where growth actually occurs. You know, initially, when we started down this path, like Mr. Rutherford said, Station Seven, we thought we might be able to include in, in the impact fees. And so that's why we had that, that station identified as one of them. But just timing didn't work out. And we do have the fund balance to be able to use to contribute towards those stations. So, you know, every, every year, we're gonna have to look at that CIP and make sure that there isn't an additional area. There is an area that we've identified now where call volume is occurring where it hasn't historically. And that's in roughly that five mile to Cloverdale along Fairview has become a bit of a hotspot there. We are seeing very different patterns in our response, where we're responding to calls. Historically, if we saw ten thousand people move into the city of Meridian, we would see an increase in call volume in the core of Boise. But not necessarily a big corresponding call volume jump in Meridian proper. But that's changed. Ever since the pandemic, we've seen a lot more growth in Meridian. In fact, that station at Eustick and Linder is now the second busiest ambulance in the access system, probably the second busiest ambulance in the state of Idaho. So things have really changed for us. You know, we do maximize our response pattern. So the, the ambulance at Station Ten, which is at Cloverdale, McMillan, most of the time that's going to be coming west into Meridian. So even though it's a, a station that's located in Boise, because we're a district that is the entire county, you know, those resources will certainly come into Meridian as often as we need them to.
Council, any additional questions? Thank you. And I just want to say thank you for working with Chief Bloom on finding a way to help get the service deployed as quickly as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. As it relates to EMS, unless there are other questions, I'm happy to entertain any questions you have related to the other impact fees. Again, we've got jail that is in this for all county, including in cities. And the coroner is also included, relatively modest amount for the coroner. But, but those are also part of our impact fees. And then, of course, out in the county, we're gonna charge law enforcement for the sheriff's office like you all do for police. So happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Um, I haven't had a lot of time to look at the updated impact memo, just because it came like late this morning. But I did notice that some of the fees were not finalized yet. It looked like the coroner's office was TBD. I mean, should we be ready to see an updated version of this? What is your timing? Are these numbers finalized for the other impact fees? Maybe just an overview of where you're at in that process.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. If you want to put those up, Leon, we have those. They are finalized. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater. Those are fixed. That attachment was something that Leon put together earlier, but now the, those are, those are fixed. In fact, the coroner, I was looking right before I got up here. The coroner's is eighty-eight dollars per residential unit and four cents a square foot for non-residential.
Oh, sorry. Also, learning how to use the mic. Ada County staff is learning how to use your system here. So one second, and I'll have those pulled up for you. So to Mr. Rutherford's point, I think there's a appendix within the EMS CIP that says TBD on the corner, but we actually have finalized the coroner's CIP. And so I'll show you the fee table here. It is shown, hopefully you can see my screen here on page thirteen. So it's a proposed eighty-eight dollars per residential unit and four cents per commercial square foot would be the impact that we are collecting.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater, as it relates to the other impact fees, Leon, in that attachment that, that she mentioned, are those correct?
I believe so. I'd probably want to go double-check the EMS CIP appendix to confirm, but other than the coroner, I think everything else had been solidified. But I can take a quick look and confirm that for you if that's the interest of, of the council and Councilwoman Strater.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, so I have eighty-eight dollars for coroner for residential unit, a hundred and eighty-one per res, per residential unit for EMS and seven hundred and fifteen for the jail.
And, yes, and looking at this exhibit four dash one, that seems to align with what Mr. Rutherford said, the exception of the coroner's TBD is now again, the eighty-eight dollars per residential unit and four cents per square foot.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thank you. Yeah, in a rush, I just wanted to go to the place where they were all together. So that's probably why we had a disconnect. I appreciate you walking through that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
If I remember from the last time that you guys were here, the impact fee for the coroner's office is largely for vehicles. Is that, am I remembering that correctly? Because you've got the capital project that's already underway and funded, intent is only use impact fees for vehicles. Is that, does that change? Is that still the plan?
Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, largely correct. The new facility is not going to be funded with, with impact fees. It's underway, as you mentioned. There are things that we are shelling out in that facility that we may add large equipment at some point to help them deal with the caseload that may be impact fee eligible, but it will be vehicles and big equipment for that facility. The facility is scheduled to be built and go online well before we have enough eighty-eight dollars to make anything happen. But, but I do think over the long term, there will be parts of that building that are, that are built out internal.
Stephen, and maybe that's a piece, at least for me, that I'd like to get some more information about what the plan for that is. The, the jail piece, man, there's a nexus there. I totally can get behind that and see that. Obviously, the work that you're doing for county, county-only residents with the sheriff, the work here with EMS, all those three, it's easy for me to find that nexus. The coroner's the one that I'm just really struggling with to try and understand where that nexus lies and you know, impact fees, it sounds, again, it sounds like that impact fees are gonna be largely used just for vehicles. And I, I struggle with having an impact fee, only paying for vehicles. If there's a larger capital plan for the space that you're building out, I think forecasting that to the cities would, for me, would be helpful. So I'm just food for thought as to where I'm at. And, and that's where some of my questions are gonna lie is what are those added projects that you're gonna need to rely on the impact fees to fund?
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, I'll get you that.
Great. Thank you.
So Steve, maybe, what, what is the, from where you are now, the timeframe, your hope for implementation? Wouldn't you be asking the city to make final decisions on these issues?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would permit me, I'd turn it over to Leon. He is currently scoping that project right now.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmembers, obviously, to Steve's point earlier, we've got to get everyone rowing in the same direction, which has been the coordination of all the cities to make sure they're on board with us. Moving forward to this, basically, if we have the green light to move forward, we'll be submitting application to our Development Services Department, scheduling that for hearing hopefully in September with board adoption in November would be our goal. So based on the advice of our legal staff, we kind of need to have this adopted and solidified before we go to our city partners and ask you to adopt it. But we will be working with you and your legal teams in advance to scope out inner, those interlocal agreements, perhaps share language on the ordinance, language that we're using. You know, obviously, at the end of the day, you get to adopt whatever ordinance for your jurisdiction, language-wise, that makes sense. But key elements to that will be sharing early. So again, our adoption hopefully in November and as quickly as jurisdictions can make it through their system, obviously, I believe it. Here would be a stop at your P and Z and then a, a final decision by this group. So probably another three to four months after that. So early twenty-twenty-three, everyone would have this adopted and everyone would be collecting those fees. That's where we're, we're looking right now. Obviously, we'd love to have had this happen about a year and a half ago, and it's just been a lot of these discussions that we had to get in the right place to make sure everyone was on board.
Funny, it's time to get more questions answered is what I heard, if necessary. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
So like we've done our, our parks and police and fire impact fees, if I understand that process right, you'll adopt the capital improvement plan that incorporates each of these elements. Will be presented the maximum allowable impact fee that we could impose. And then we could, and each city could independently choose to do less than the max, perhaps exclude one of them. I don't know. I know that's not the intent, but that decision also can happen city by city.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, yes. And that's where, that's where it gets a little bit tricky, right? If, if we recover less, you know, the capital improvement plan kind of falters. So that's why we're spending so much time trying to kind of cement everyone into the numbers and the projects and the plan we have. Because that, it kind of tips it over if we have cities collecting different amounts.
But your, but, Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Your plan's the same. You have the same capital needs for the county as a whole, regardless of whether you have a funding source from the city. I mean, it might be nice, I don't know if you're allowed to do this, but if, you know, one city participates and another doesn't, that the city that participates and the residents are paying those impact fees, that perhaps the location of a facility might be there as opposed to a different community.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, the direction we've got from our board is they want the cities to all agree and stack hands. And so we haven't left anyone in the dust. The city of Boise had some demands as it related to affordable housing. And we spent a lot of time talking about how that looks. And it's still, still not really clear, although I think it's clear enough that we can start drafting. But the idea is really to kind of get uniformity, realizing that you all have absolute authority to, to, to say no or yes or something less.
Okay.
Council, any additional questions? Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Stephen. If you need to come back before, for an update, please let us know. Otherwise, council may not see it till it comes through the, our process. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Cavanagh. I'll get you that information.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item fifteen, Community Development, Public Works Department, discussion of potential city code update to address city service connections outside of city limits. Looks like I'll turn this over to Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I drew the short straw on this item, but have been working a small team with Public Works and our legal department. Wanted to have a discussion, although in the packet for you today is an initial draft of some proposed language that could amend in a future agenda, reading city code title nine, one, sixteen, which relates to water provisions and nine, four, twenty-six, really very similar language relating to sewer provision. And the, the part of those sections of our code about requiring connection to city services when you're annexed or outside of the annexation process. Within each one of those sections I just mentioned, there are two processes or two conditions, if you will. One is when someone petitions the city to connect with no change of use or development proposed. So I think the most common case is when ACHD is doing a roadway widening project and someone's septic tank is in the way. They need to likely rebuild that septic system or hook up to our system. And we'd rather have them hook up than rebuild a septic system if we can provide that service. So the property owner isn't proposing to develop anything or change anything. It's something else that comes up and an emergency or a safety concern arises and they would like to hook up but not annex because they aren't developing. And then the second one is requests that are proposed so property can intensify or develop. So this is going through the county and county development usually, but city services are nearby, and they would like to use our services, but they're not quite contiguous to city limits. So they're not eligible for annexation. Sewer and water are just over there, and we can bring them here, but we're not by statute have the ability to annex the property. And, and the first process works okay, and, and it seems to make some sense. The second process where there's development associated with that request is where we have some concerns and run into some issues sometimes. And that's largely why we're here today is to talk to you about that and a potential change. So again, been working pretty closely. So I think at this point, I'm just gonna read to you a couple, few paragraphs from, from the packet. It's, it's not very long, but I think just so I don't miss anything. In the current process for both of those requests, an applicant submits a written petition to the Public Works Department to connect to services. Public Works City Engineer models the request to determine if services could be provided. Other city departments, mine, usually fire and, and community development are the, the main ones, are informally asked for feedback if the proposed use increases, intensifies, or redevelopment purposes. However, review of these projects for compliance with city standards is not always comprehensive, certainly not as comprehensive as it would be if it were a formal development application. certainly not as comprehensive as it would be if it were a formal development application that were submitted to the city. So couple that with that we don't actually have a full submittal to the city with our requirements. The county's codes are are just different than the city's. And many times, the city's development standards aren't proposed by the developer. They're developing in the county, not the city. So that makes some sense. The county's codes aren't the same as the city's. So our landscaping requirements, pathway requirements, streetlight requirements, sidewalks, design review standards are are different. So while while some of that, the need or the conditions may be included in an agreement that the city enters into as someone petitioning us, not all those things can be or should be included in a service agreement. So the the real impact, there's a couple. We we focused in on the fiscal impacts primarily. So that review and the coordination and the communication that happens at a staff level is all done without any review fees being paid by an applicant, not a big deal. But there are paying customers that we 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 deal with and we tend to give them more service. And so it is just something done when we can fit it in and and try to coordinate. For development projects in the county, the city loses out on fire, police and parks impact fees. Yet with the agency agreements, it's likely that there is an emergency, city resources will be dispatched to the property. So like I said before, most of these requests come in when city limits are just there. So you you typically have our police that are doing patrol in the general vicinity, fire stations that are generally nearby. This this becomes combined as a lose-lose basically for the city, where the property owner doesn't pay any property taxes over time because they're still in the county. We lose out on the impact fees, development review fees, yet our fire and and police are likely the first to respond. Further that with you're they're responding to a project that likely isn't even built to our standards. So there there really are kind of death by a thousand cuts, if you will, on a project that may or may not even be built to city standards consistent with our comprehensive plan that we're responding to in the case of an emergency. So in summary, there there are very few, if any, reasons why providing city services to facilitate development projects in the county is in the best interest of the city. Therefore, city staff would like to amend current policy to further clarify that development in the county with city services is highly discouraged. But when appropriate, like in the case of an emergency for an existing use, a clear and concise process to request services is available. As I mentioned at the top, there are some underlying strike through draft provisions that Mr. Starman has put together, again, in consultation as a small team. And just wanted to start that conversation there with you all to see if what's your your take on where this may be headed. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Just a comment. I thought the bright line principle you're trying to promote is really a wise one. Discouraging and ask and determination up here, I think is helpful. So applicants know on the front end that we're not encouraging or even allowing perhaps this type of service outside of city limits. To be really clear early, so folks know sort of the gist of what I think you're asking, to bolster the language. So we've got clear language on the front end of what our policy is, which seems to make great sense. I never really understood outside of the emergency context, why we would ever want to encourage folks to to try and do that. So I think you're what you're doing makes great sense.
Mr. Mayor, I know there wasn't necessarily a question there, but Mr. Borton, you know, I think the intent when we modified that was to not encourage the use of city services outside. But there may be a case where it is appropriate, not an emergency situation. It seems like we're getting more of them than we anticipated, you know, maybe one every few years or so. And now we're getting multiples every year. And it's like, that's more than we we thought we'd leave the door open a crack just for that one project where it made some sense. And now it's like, oh, I can go ask the council for those services and still do it in the county. And so we're kind of getting, I don't want to say inundated, it's not that frequent, but it is multiple a year. And so that's why we kind of want to back off that and go, you know what? This isn't best practice. And to further that thought even more, if we did have the Apple or Microsoft or whatever that that thing is where it made some sense, we could modify the code back and say, you know what? We changed our mind. We do. We are okay with, not that we would do that necessarily, but you have that ability as a council to change this back. If this doesn't work, we could go to something different. But I appreciate the comments and we think we're on the right track too, again, with not encouraging it and even going further than discouraging it, prohibiting it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I just to respond to that, I mean, I would hope future councils are really principles based and it's incredibly unfair to the existing taxpayers to make those exceptions, no matter how attractive a project might look. It doesn't make financial sense to start making those exceptions. And so I wouldn't even leave that door open. I don't think we'd ever entertain changing it back. This makes perfect sense to me. I think you're on the right track. If there is an emergency at a small residence that's not changing, we could talk about it, like in the instance of the septic tank example. But this seems like the right the right track. So I appreciate you pursuing this.
Councilon Pearl.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow council members. I think formalizing a process in this situation is very wise. It not only gives clarity to the public, but clarity to our own staff and city about what the expectations are as far as how it's handled. So I appreciate that. One quick question for you. So you had mentioned there not being a fee charged to review a request. Is there a reason why we wouldn't do that? Or can you share more about the thought process on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro, you know, I don't think it's just never really come up. Certainly, it's not an issue in those cases of an emergency because there isn't any development proposed. But in the case of some of these that are coming through the county, it's it's part of our title nine agreement with the county. They just transmit to us their projects and it's just part of what we do for them or with them is review that. So we don't have a mechanism. I guess we could explore somewhere to us potentially collecting impact fees on their behalf. We could ask them to collect a project review fee on our behalf for a project that we review in the county. But, you know, up until last few years, it really hasn't been much of a problem. I'll get half a dozen of a half a dozen requests a year, can respond back to the county. It's not a huge time sink, but we're getting more and more of these and they're complex a lot of times. So it just really hasn't ever come back and up and it doesn't, hasn't risen to the level of where we thought we need to recoup those costs.
Council, any additional questions on this item for staff? Mr. Hood, you think you've got enough direction?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Unless Public Works has anything they'd like to add. Okay. All right. Thank you. With that, council, we'll move on to item 16, executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we go into executive session per IDO code 74-2061F.
Second.
A motion of second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt. Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
All eyes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Have motion second come out of executive session on favor say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, the ayes have it, we are out of executive session.
There I move we adjourn.
Have a motion adjourn on favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Call the meeting order for the record. It is July 26, 2022 at 6:02 PM. We will begin this rigorous city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Perrow. Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we'd all please rise to join us in the pledge. We had no one sign up for the community invocation, so we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Here. Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt the agenda as published as their discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. So, Cork, do we have anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. And with that, we will move into actual items. The first item up is a request for reconsideration of denial of Burnside Ridge's H2021-0070. Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So you have a request for reconsideration of Burnside Ridge. It's in your packet. You've had opportunity to review it. So tonight, again, it's not a hearing. This is mostly for the public, because I know all of you know this. This is not a hearing time. This is an opportunity to either grant, deny, or remand the findings back for further consideration. If the decision is to rehear it, then we would then set it up and notice it up for a future date. We don't have to pick that date today, because we'll have to go through the noticing process. The direction and motion is to deny. That would be the motion. We'll prepare some findings to that effect and then provide that to the applicant. If it's to remand for further, further action on the findings themselves, we will send that back. Not to a date certain. We'll prepare those and we'll bring them back. Likely if we were to do that, it'd be in your first or second meeting in August, depending on what extent there is to changes. But that's what's before you tonight. I do see the applicants in the audience, so they are here at least to hear what your discussion is.
Thank you. Councilman Hoagland.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, I did review the request by the applicant and looked into that and, of course, reviewed the minutes of our meeting. And certainly, one of the major issues was there are what we refer to as our growth areas. And we did refer to our growth areas several times during the deliberations, but it was critical that to note that we did not, as a council, expressly refer to the 2020 priority growth map when it was not when denying the application. And staff had made mention that we're not referring to the growth areas, and so it was not, not part of that. So I'm leaning towards making a motion to grant the request for consideration, but to limit it to the purpose of clarifying the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and not delving into that. I've been advised by legal counsel that we can tighten those findings of fact, and I think that's probably something that we should do. But just wanted to put that out there for, for discussion.
Counsel, further discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I would move that the city council grant the applicant's request for reconsideration for the limited purpose of clarifying the findings of fact and conclusions of law concerning adverse impacts on public services.
I'd second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I was absent on the seventh, so I just feel it appropriate to abstain from reconsideration request, so.
Also, the other discussion on the motion? Mr. Cor Haller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton abstains. Hoagland.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero noes, and one abstain. The motion for reconsideration for the purposes of findings of facts is agreed to. Thank you. Next item up is, is item two, Public Hearing for Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2022, 2026, Consolidated Plan. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments. Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to give you guys a quick overview of the consolidated plan that goes from October of this year through September 2026. And then I'll move into the changes that have been made since the last time we presented. So just a quick reminder, the con plan identifies the goals and strategies for the next five years, and the action plan identifies the specific projects that will take in the upcoming year. So our five-year goals, which are basically the different types of projects that we will be funding, are housing, public services, public facilities, and infrastructure improvements, and program administration. We have identified some projects for this upcoming year. Under housing, we identified housing repair and homebuyer assistance. For public services, there's youth scholarships, emergency rental assistance, senior transportation. And for public facility and infrastructure improvements, there's two separate streetlight modernization projects, and then just basic program administration and fair housing activities. So there were some changes to all the documents, but most of it was just wordsmithing, basic things, expansion to discussion items. But I did want to point out a few things. The first one is on the con plan. Under the citizen participation, we updated the methods of outreach that we used and who we've contacted. Under the number of housing units, there was an analysis from HUD, but we took that out because it was old and it didn't reflect our current situation and how difficult our housing market is right now. And under barriers to affordable housing, we updated it to include the list of priorities, priority policies addressed in the city's comprehensive plan. On the action plan, we updated one of the projects. It was Franklin Industry Project, and we, we moved the location so that it provides services to a low-mod area instead of the major thoroughfare, so that the CDBG benefits are directly for the low-to-moder income area. And the final change was on the citizen participation plan. We updated the substantial amendment criteria to tie that directly to a project goal instead of an individual activity. So the final steps on this, we have our public hearing and public comment period for the con plan, action plan, and analysis impediment tonight. That closes. And then on the August 9th consent agenda, then I will have those final documents and resolution for you. August 15th, the public comment period for the citizen participation plan closes, and I will have that final document and the resolution on August 23rd agenda. Consent agenda, by the way. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Crystal. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Cavanagh.
Crystal, can you refresh my memory why the request is to close the public hearing tonight as opposed to waiting till August 9th?
I did not call out the citizen participation plan in the original one, and so I just wanted to make sure I noticed it effectively for everyone instead of giving a shorter timeframe.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I guess, Crystal, is, is there any reason why we couldn't keep the public comment period open through the ninth? When we'd be taking action or be asked to take action?
So I, I misunderstood your previous question. Sorry. So the reason that we're closing that one is because we have to make all the updates, and we have to update it in HUD's system, which can take some time. And so we would just want to give ourselves enough time to incorporate all the comments that were in there. So if, if you guys want to, then we could. It would just take a little bit of extra work to make sure we got it in on time.
Thanks, Crystal. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Crystal, can you go back to the slide that shows the changes? The major changes? The change that takes, um. Uh, let's see, keep going. Maybe you didn't put it on here, but the 20%. Yes, the 20% from the, for the annual funding, if it's being reallocated, project goal would be an entire category, right, versus individual activity? Is that something the federal government changes part of like our compliance with the con plan, or is that something that, that we have just decided to do? That the city has decided as part of their criteria?
We adjusted it. The federal government does not require it to be super strict. The 20%, we can define what that looks like. And in the past, then we've had it related to a specific activity, but sometimes that makes it a little bit more difficult to respond when maybe a project closes out under budget or something, and we have to go out for, we have to do a substantial amendment, which requires 30 days of public notice and everything to reallocate those funds to a different activity. So it could be like one streetlight project to another, but because it's a separate activity, we can't just move that over. But with this, we would be able to do that. But it would only be projects that were previously identified in our action plan.
Counsel, any additional questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone sent to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do. First is Ralph Chappell.
Good evening, Ralph. I assume you know the drill.
Ralph Chappell, 1-899-SOUTH-1. Looking at the first item here, it says public facilities and infrastructure. It says senior center. What's the seniors? They already have one. Oh, it's going to help do something more with it, right? The other thing, it says neighborhood facilities. What are those? The last, another one, it says health facility. What's, what are those? On the next line down there, you have childcare. We're getting into childcare business? And making sense. Emergency rental assistance. Down the next one, it says homeowner, homeownership assistance. We're going to help people buy their houses? Now, it says homeowner repairs. Yeah? Why? My thing is. I'm going to get this money from the government. Where does the government get the money at? They get it from China, so then we have to pay interest on that stuff. So, now you're going to say, okay, we're going to take that money, which we do have the money here in, in the city of Meriting. We can use our own money, but we're going to take it from the federal government. For what reason? Doesn't, to me, that don't make any sense. You could do the job, same thing, with the money the city has, with today's dollars, instead of borrowing that money. Interest is going to be paid on it, and who's going to have to pay it? Not you, you, you. Going to be your kids and your grandkids. Doesn't make any sense. You, you're just. All right. Now, the other thing is, do you really want to burden your kids and grandkids with this, with this particular, I don't know how many hundred thousand dollars it is. It's quite a bit. Whenever, you could just do the same thing with, with the, the city's money. So, my thing is, approve this. Have a good night's sleep, because your kids and grandkids are going to have to pay for it, not you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, next is Kay Baldwin.
If you say your name and address for the record, we recognize for three minutes. You get into one of the microphones.
My name is Tommy Kay Baldwin. I reside at 2938 West Santa Clara Drive. And I was coming through the block grant this year. They saved my home. They. Two years ago, in October of 2009. I was being responsible. I asked a company to come in. You know, do the, do the update that you do in the fall. And we'd just bought our home. We had. They discovered a drip, a single drip, and it turned out. And it turned out that we had to remove the entire, the water heater, the, the water softener. And at that same time, we took in a disabled tire from the system. And it was bad, bad, bad. While the insurance adjuster was there, one of the repairmen popped his head out of the wall and said, do you know you have polyvinyl, polyvinyl pipe? I don't even know what that is. And we lost our home insurance that day as well. We were unable to get home insurance until this grant came in and redid my plumbing. My, I have three special needs children. They came in and made my home safe for all three of my little boys. And I am now off medication because I am no longer living in a state of stress. My children are because of this grant.
Keep saying on the microphone.
Forgive me. My children will be grateful today in years to come because they are safe today.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if the others wanted to testify, but I'll call them. Lisa Henson. Tony Allison. Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item this evening? And do we have any? I haven't looked to see if we have any online. If you're online and like to provide testimony, you can use raise your hand feature. Okay. Seeing no one come forward or raise their hand. Crystal, would you like me to make any final comments from the testimony that was provided this evening? Nope. If you'd like to come forward, if you come, come up to the mic. Everything has to be said into the mic on the record. So if you can come forward, state your name and address, you'll be recognized for three minutes.
My name is Paul Ealem. My address is 5127 North of CC Avenue in Meridian. This is my first attend, first time I've been attending a meeting. So I apologize. I don't know the process very well. But just curious, do we get to hear all the details of the funding? Just like that gentleman said, like, do we get to hear, you know, all the, all the, you know, specific amounts of each one of those categories? Of that money that's going to be spent? Or do we just get to hear like a balloon number?
Crystal?
So we've actually presented the exact numbers multiple times over the last several months. And yes, I can definitely get that information to you. I, I think I have it printed out at my desk if you'd like me to get that for you.
But this is the last time anybody can discuss it then? Is that, you said this is the date when they close it? So there's no more public comments and nobody else can review it and then come up again?
Are you needing to, are you needing to have it extended so that you can review it?
Like I said, this is the first time I've ever attended the meeting. But just like that gentleman said, I kind of like to know what, what money's being spent and how it's being allocated and, you know.
Right. Yeah, I can definitely provide that information to you. And I can also keep your comment and I can put it into the plan as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, just Ralph and I didn't catch the gentleman's name who just testified. We had gone through a pretty extensive process in reviewing the plan. But just to give you like a couple of examples, some of the examples for the senior center, that was like specifically to provide them with transportation so that they could get needy seniors to their doctor's appointments and so forth. The bus that they use has broken down or the van that they use. And the childcare is, it's not like Boise where they're giving grants to all childcare providers. That's specific to the Boys and Girls Club in downtown Meridian. But I think your point is well taken in a couple of fronts, right? The federal government's spending is totally out of control. I agree with you. But this money is going to go away if it's not used for positive things in Meridian. And a lot of people in these programs depend on it. And then I guess the other comment I would make is I do think we have the ability to keep the public hearing open tonight. And that might be a good thing for us to do, to give folks a chance to review in more detail. So I would suggest that the council consider that.
Thank you, Councilman Schrader. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item at this time? Or council do have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
Crystal, I appreciate kind of helping to answer that question at the forefront, kind of leads to where my question was coming from. I always like to give the public as much opportunity to comment. And your explanation was spot on. We've had multiple hearings about this. The information has been made public. Oftentimes though, people don't necessarily have the opportunity to pay attention to it till it's at the last minute. This is their, was kind of their last chance to, to provide testimony. So I recognize it's going to create an extra burden onto you as staff. But I know you can capture the comments that we heard here tonight. If we receive any other communication between now and August 9th, I know you'll be able to incorporate that as well. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we continue the public hearing for the CDBG program year 22 to 26 consolidated plan to August 9th.
Second.
Have a motion as second to continue this item. Is there any discussion? If no, I'll favor second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, you guys have it and the public hearing is continued. Next item up is item three, a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 22-1988. We will open this public hearing with comments from Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a slide that I know Chris is going to pull up in a second. Actually, I have two. Can we put the district one up first? Thank you. Oh, Mr. Members of the council and members of the public. So tonight was the first reading of an ordinance change that's being proposed from the mayor's office and the legal department. So I do want to clear up the first thing is there was a recent news story published about this exercise that we're going through. And it started off, the title of it was oops, like we missed something. No one missed anything. The committee that we asked to volunteer their time to create these districts pursuant to state code did exactly what they were asked to do. They were asked to look at the districts and base it all on population and precincts, which is what the state law contemplates. It doesn't contemplate anything else. And so that was their charge, that was their direction, and they took it very seriously. You heard the Chair, Chair Joe Greer talk about that. And the only consideration of anything, and not as to where anyone lives, but where it was any consideration beyond population precincts was the committee discussed on a, a district that crossed the freeway. The only significant feature we have here, because there's no rivers, there's no mountains, there's nothing of that great of magnitude here, is the freeway. And the conversation, as, as Chairwoman Greer stated, was do we have one or two districts that cross the freeway? And the decision was ultimately made that one would cross the freeway because it was inevitable that one had to. But we would try to keep it to just the one. So that was the only consideration they made beyond precincts and the population. And that was what their direction was, and that was what the state law contemplated. So these districts are what you approved a few weeks ago. They're not being proposed to change and they're not being proposed to go back to the committee to reconsider anything. Because that's what their direction was. So I do want to correct that the impression I got from reading the news story about it was that someone erred and now we're trying to fix an error. We're not trying to fix an error. We're not trying to do that. What we're proposing is to change seat numbers. State code also grants authority to the city clerk to designate the seat numbers. So there was no thought or process that went into the conversation by the committee as to where the numbers would go. Whether they'd start at the bottom left or the top right or the middle or whatever. There was no conversation. They, they went basically like a map. One, two, three, four, five, six. They just went in a circular pattern. That was it. There was no reason to do it that way. There was no discussion about that pattern works better than this pattern or this direction is better in this location than that one. None of that was being considered. They just went that way just because it looks like a clock. That's about it. So at the time, all of the seats of the council members have a seat number. So in Idaho, you can either elect city councils by at large or by seat number. Some cities do at large like Garden City and Kuna. Some do it by seat numbers like us. So we've always just designated numbers. So for the lack of a better way of doing it, they created the districts by the numbers. They just plugged all the council members by seats into the same numbers. No rival reason, no revaluating election terms or the staggered terms that are inherent in city elections, none of that. So all of that was done completely blind to anything else. And that was exactly what they were asked to do. So again, there was no oops here. So now, once it was completed, the discussion point we had, and we've had this prior to them being completed internally with my department, was is there a way to create the districts to be all, all have representatives that actually reside in those districts? In the, be completed by 2023. Right now, Chris, can we hop to the next slide?
Arrow.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. So right now, if we did nothing, you would see there that districts one, two, three would change in the general election in 20, oh, excuse me, one, three, five would change in 23. That is the cycle that those seat numbers have been in the past. And then seats two, four and six would change in 25. By happenstance, the current member of seat four, which would be the corresponding district four, happens to reside in that district today. It's in district six, that person happens to reside in that district today. If we make the change, then district one, to what we're proposing, we're basically seat two would now become seat one. Seat one would become seat two. The representative in district one lives there now. So there's no, so again, we're reading the intent of the state law sooner. District one would be represented by a person that resides there. District two would be represented by a person that resides there. District three would come up for the election cycle in the 23 election naturally anyway. And currently, no council members live in that district now. District four would be, as I stated before, would already be immediately with a representative. 23 for seat five, because again, no current council member lives in seat five today. So that was, would not really come up anyway. Seat six would again be immediate. So the desire when this law was passed in 2020, our office had a lot of contact and a lot of conversation with Senator Winder, the, the president pro temp of the Senate, who was the one who carried this forward through the Senate and to the House and got approved. His desire in both 20 and 21, when we were trying to create some changes that would make it a little bit cleaner for everybody, was the sooner the better. That was his desire. He recognized with staggered terms, it can be challenging to do that. Other, other cities have chosen a different path that we did not choose to go down because we didn't find the same comfort level of state law support for some other alternative paths. So when this process concluded, as it was done, we looked at it and said, if we make this one change of seat numbers, then it's done. It's done now for most of them and it's done completely by the next election in 23. So is that advantageous to the city? In our belief, it's advantageous to our citizens. The intent of the code was to have representative government by districts. The sooner the better. Again, we do nothing. It will happen by 2025. So three and a half years now from now, it would be completed anyway. Our desire in bringing this forward to you to consider is that we could have this done here by the end of next year. By the, the cycle of election in November of 23, every person in every district would be representative and reside in the district as intended. So one question that was asked of me in the last week is, do we have to do this? No, you don't have to do this. I mean, you're not required to do any of it. But if the objective and desire is to get the representative government done sooner and completed and move on to the next, the next cycle, which is at the next census, that hopefully I'm not standing here having this conversation with you then, it will, it'll be a natural evolution. As I stated last week, it may look odd to people for the next few election cycles that it's no longer one, three and five and two, four and six. And 10 years, they can change that back too. It doesn't matter. They could do that. We didn't recommend doing that now because that doesn't seem necessary when this smaller change has support in the code, has a direction in the state law that contemplates a change of seat numbers and allows for that type of change. So that's what's before you. That's hopefully explains a little bit better. Hopefully from the public perspective, they understand that this is not trying to correct any error or mistake. It's trying to clear up an issue that could be done sooner than later. And we believe as intended by this code, as intended by Senator Winder, this, this accomplishes that sooner than later. And that's a good positive thing for what the code intends. So I can answer your questions. And also our intent is so the public understands, this is just the first reading. We have planned on second reading at your next meeting on the ninth and the third reading with another opportunity for public comment on that one. Obviously written comments, they can submit any time. But our intent was to bring you back on the third reading on the 16th, if the council has a mindset to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Yeah, I, I made my comments last week when, when this first came forward. And I think the newspaper reported on, on those comments. But to me, this is the way to fully implement representative government as quickly as possible in regards to how, how the legislature had hoped. But also, in my opinion, it reflects the will of the people from the last election by aligning the, those who were elected into, into those seats where they live and gives them that representation as well. So I'm happy to also answer any questions from council from my perspective as well. But counsel, any questions for Mr. Neri?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I would like to make a comment. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. You know, I just like to be upfront about things. I do think that this is very positive for the residents of what is currently designated as district two, to have representation. But I cannot ignore the fact, after thinking about this, since I viewed the hearing last week, that this change would benefit me directly. It is specific to my seat and the district that I live in. And I don't want to ignore that fact. It would specifically allow me to run for office two years earlier. I don't feel that it will be appropriate for me to vote on this and I will be abstaining from voting on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, Councilwoman Schrader. I also live in district two. Again, the commission was blind to where we lived. They didn't take that into consideration and both of us were put in. But I, I see it completely different. This allows the voters of the district to make that decision right away. Instead of having someone who lives out of the district be their representative, they get to vote immediately on who they want, whether it's Councilwoman Schrader, me or someone else. That's their decision. And then they have a representative elected from that district, whatever they decide immediately instead of waiting two years. So I, I just see it from that perspective. It gives them the opportunity to make their voice heard right away. So just, just a different perspective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So Bill, when a resident sees the chart and it says that they now immediately have a representative in a district, what conclusion should they draw from that?
I guess, Councilwoman Pearl, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess if, if, if that's important to them, because that's what the whole purpose of the state code change was, then it means that again, they've got somebody who, in theory, and this is very theoretical, that has a better understanding of what issues face them and where they live. You know, many of the things you hear are very centric to the location, whether it's traffic, whether it's schools, whatever that may be. So I think if I'm a resident, I would at least have the comfort level to know that the person representing me at the city council probably has a better understanding of what I have to deal with every day than somebody else who may live in a completely different part of the city and not really feel that. Because again, I know you've all heard that. You don't, you've heard people say to you, well, you don't get it. You live here. I live there. I'm the one driving over here. You're not driving. I'm the one driving over here, you're not driving over here. So I think that's what, if, if, if you're that into this stuff, I think that's what you would think is, okay, now we've got somebody that lives and represents me that kind of gets what I go through every day. That's the way I would think.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Because we, none of us were elected in these seats, and we didn't, we didn't run with, with a district-specific message, or, you know, we're not, I, I don't think any of us would say, hey, we're specialists in the district in which we now currently live that these maps have been drawn. So to, to say, I just, I guess I just want to be careful representing to the public that we have some sort of specialized knowledge about our districts when we say that there's an immediate representative, because we weren't elected in that way originally. So that's kind of what I was trying to get with that question is, just to be clear that, you know, we weren't voted in in these districts originally. We may or may not have specialized information about that district currently. So if somebody looks at this and has no history or understanding of, of kind of what's gone on, they may look at it and go, oh, okay, so the current representative for District One clearly understands the concerns for District One right now. And so I was just curious, you know, your thoughts on that. Because we, we really haven't had a discussion about how this looks for us in, in, in the sense of how we are interacting with members of, of their districts.
So yeah, absolutely fair question, Councilwoman Pearl. So Mr. Mayor, remember the council. So the legislature, on their own accord, and, and I'll be honest, I've, I've been in this business a long time, nobody I've ever dealt with asked about this at, at this level. Everybody's been used to the state electing people that way. And, but you're right, but the same thing can be said of the state representatives. I don't know if this person lives across the street from me or moved here yesterday. I don't know. So I don't know how, how engaged everyone is in that conversation. But what I do think is, the legislature made their independent choice, absent what cities wanted or didn't want, and said, we're going to choose now that you no longer get elected in this form, you get elected in this form. Knowing full well, no one, no one in the state had a district system in place in 2020. No one. Not, not Boise, not us, no one. So they didn't really ponder that, I don't believe, very long and hard on whether or not that would be a bother to somebody to say, well, I voted for this person for my seat. Because the seat just was a number. It didn't have any meaning to anything. It was just a designation. And as I stated earlier, cities could elect people by seats, so you had to run for a specific seat, or you could elect them at large. There was no distinction between either one of those systems. And, and there was never intended to be. So they changed the rules at the state level, regardless of what cities may have thought, and decided that's going to be the way it goes from now on. And now, instead of having a choice, as we had before, we don't have a choice. We always had the ability to district before. No city chose to because of other reasons, or for whatever reason. But now we don't have a choice. We have to do it that way. So we have to separate ourselves from the mindset of, I voted for this person because seat two means so much to me. I'm sorry, seat two is this district. If you, if you, if you live in a different part of the city, that's the way it goes. You're no longer in District Two, and you no longer represent seat two. You live in District Five. So we are just changing our mindset from what a seat is to a district. Everything's a district.
There will be time for public comment and questions afterward, done with the presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
You know, I, I, I felt that this made sense, but I'm really interested to see what the public has to say about this. Like the process that took place before, it was very transparent. Council and, and the mayor's office was a couple arm lengths away from it at all times, and will continue to, to, to approach it that way for sure. But I'm, I'm real excited to see what the, the public has to say about this and reserve my final thoughts until the, the, the final reading, the final public hearing.
Anyone else?
Any other questions for Mr. Neri?
Thank you.
Director, we have anybody sign up in advance to provide testimony?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, first is Mike Luis.
And if you say your name and address to the record, you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Mike Luis, 5343 West McMurtry Street, Meridian. I don't agree with this. I mean, you guys selected a redistricting committee. There was five meetings, two public hearings, six drafts. You guys approved it, and I think you guys should stick with it. And the last election cycle, as a matter of fact, there was a issue. Phil McGrane didn't rotate the names correctly, and there was a very close race in one of the district or one of the seats. So let it go to vote. It is what it is. It was selected. Let's go to the election.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, next is Phil Reynolds.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Philip Reynolds, and I reside at 6423 North Salvia Way, Meridian. And I'm here to speak in opposition of this proposal. I think it gives an appearance of gerrymandering. I think the committee did a great job. They worked hard, they put things in place, and all of you approved it. And it, it should remain. And I believe the attorney just mentioned that most people don't even know about this. Most people don't care about this. They don't have a clue what's going on. Only the city council does, and a few political junkies that watch your agendas on a regular basis know this is happening. So I think the ethical and proper thing to do would be just to leave it the way it is. It, it, it gives the appearance that it's going to benefit, and we just heard from one of the council members, it's going to benefit council members, but it has no positive or negative impact on the citizens. And it's going to give that appearance, only for the city council. So please do the right thing. Please do not support this proposition. Thank you.
Council question.
Phil Reynolds? Should be one, just a, a quick question, because I.
Councilman Cavan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your comment about, no, the public, your, your perception is the public isn't aware of this. And I think it's the, very much the intention of the mayor, the council, our staff, to communicate with the public about this, which is why we're having multiple public hearings. I guess I'd, I'd ask your advice or recommendations on things you think the city should be doing between now and our next scheduled public hearing to better inform the public so that they have an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you for asking that. What I would like to see as a citizen is I'd like to see our representatives out in the neighborhoods. I'd like to see town hall meetings, go out to the HOA meetings, make a presence, inform the citizens of what's happening down here. Because when I walked precincts last year, I learned there's a lot of seniors. They're not on computers. Some of them don't drive. They don't have a clue what's happening down here, and they have the right to know. And it's the city council and the city staff's job to keep that information going out to them. They don't all have access, so please keep that in mind too. But they don't know this is happening. And I, I would bet, if gambling was legal, I'd bet the majority of them don't have a clue about any of this right now. So please give the right appearance, be ethical, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Question for Phil. Phil, you know, one thing that this does, as this chart shows, is this would enact the ordinance for the legislature's desire to have us in districts to be representative of the people in 2023. By delaying it to 2025, that means we won't be doing those things, because we'll have people in districts that they don't live in representing them, and there's no incentive to be there because they aren't going to be elected there. So why wouldn't we not want to have representation by the people sooner, as opposed to later, as a legislature intended?
Again, the general public, it doesn't matter to them. And Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the mandates for districts started from a lawsuit or lawsuits to states, and, and it came from some attorneys in Texas. And it started with some discrimination lawsuits requiring cities to break up into districts. And now it's kind of making a wave across the United States. Is that, is that information correct?
Mr. Members of the council, I, I have no idea. When the legislature discussed this in 2020, there was not a conversation about another state. All they talked about, over and over again, was they were elected in districts, and they felt that cities over 100,000 people that had at-large representation, which all cities had at that time, wasn't fair to the public. The public elects legislators by districts, therefore, cities of the size of 100,000 or greater should do it that way. That would be more representative. There was no lawsuit in the state of Idaho over this issue. There was people in public that weighed in about it, but there wasn't a lawsuit. And whether or not another state lawsuit certainly isn't going to drive you to think we're doing in our state. Another state, laws are different, the requirements are different, the rules are different. So that wasn't really any conversation at the state level that I'm aware of. All of it was, they are too large to have one person, essentially in theory, representing one-sixth of 100,000 people, when the legislative districts are nowhere near that size. So that was their focus. They're elected by districts, then the city representatives should be districts as well.
Okay, well, I can't speak for Idaho, but I can speak for the state that I moved from in the past. At-large worked out very well, and we may find in the future, I don't, I'm not going to predict the future, but we may find that what districts create is little mayors. A mayor for this district, a mayor for this district, a lot of fighting over funding. It's, it was difficult to get along. It, it created problems from where I came from. And, and these are small towns that, that had this. So something that came, and, and that's why the state that I came from was required, the cities were required to break up into districts. Maybe, I'm just guessing, maybe Idaho jumped on board before the lawsuits got here. That's a possibility. But I'm asking the city council tonight to do the right thing and, and present an ethical image to the citizens and, and just go with what you approved the first time. Because when you start making changes.
Mr. Mayor.
Gives bad appearances.
Councilmember.
Phil, I, I shared the same thoughts, really, with regard to districts. I wasn't a fan. My question to you is, you mentioned gerrymandering. Could you provide clarity of why you think that the appearance of doing this would be gerrymandered?
Well, that's, that's a political term. That's a political term.
I know what it is.
And, and as people find out that, you know, as citizens find out, that's going to be the projected image. I'm not saying this is gerrymandering, but it, it's a term that the public, as they learn, will, will toss that term around. Good or bad, it, it, it's, it's a term that people know in their heads. And, and it's, it's, again, are, are you projecting a proper image by supporting this? Making changes after you've already approved something? So please do the right thing and, and just, just leave it as it is. We'll move forward. It'll take some time, but I think it'll be better in the long run.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
So, Mr. Reynolds, I appreciate you being here, and, and this is a big part of it. So to the point of anyone in the public having some misperception on the process, you're one of the folks who is involved and knowledgeable about the process that was utilized and the, the distance and detachment of the council and mayor to it. I think that, so, one, thanks for being here, but two, as you go forward, and you might, if you talk to folks in the community, and if, and if they don't have the information that you have, we encourage you to share that about the process utilized to, to create a fair, it's not gerrymandered, it's detached from any of our input. We always struggle trying to get folks involved and informed like you have. So I encourage you to do that and try and share that. So if folks say something with misinformation about how we got this far, you'll be able to speak up and help correct them. As you watched, if, early in this process, we went to great lengths to try and, the seven of us, discuss how this being forced upon us, I don't think there's any of us that wanted to do this. None of us, we've all been here a long time, and Meridian's one community, right?
Right.
And even with, quite frankly, I don't think districts change a thing for that. The mentality is we represent the city as a whole, each of us. I, at least that's the way I think, for sure. But we were adamant from the start to be detached and to empower this community to go do basically an equal protection math equation, and that's it. Subject to the rules of the state that they forced upon us, quite frankly. So I just encourage you to, one, keep involved like you are, but help us share that message to folks in the community. If you hear misinformation, we're obviously doing the same thing. I thought, quite frankly, I don't want to hear, I, I get cautious when you use the word ethical. I don't think anything's unethical, quite frankly, about this. Councilman Hoagland said it really well. Really, it's a one minor change in the process that creates a quicker accountability and quicker voice to the folks within a community to directly elect their representatives. So I thought what Brad said made good sense as far as an explanation for it. But I appreciate you being here and, and hopefully continuing to communicate with folks about the process.
I will continue my communication and in a positive manner, as I always do. But again, the public doesn't know. They're ninety, eight to ninety-nine percent are not going to be aware of any of this. So the districts at this point, and going forward for many of them, are irrelevant. They, they want proper representation, and they want, they want their streets paved, they want their sidewalks free of debris, no graffiti, safe communities. That's what they want. They, they don't want politics, they don't want to be involved in politics. They want a beautiful, clean city to live in, and a safe city.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Councilmember.
This conversation fascinates me. Thousand percent agree. Two truths. This, this legislation that was placed upon us by the legislature, zero citizens in Meridian have asked for it. And anytime you can communicate with any of our state legislators about that concern, we encourage all of our citizens to do that, to say, you really created a solution for something that wasn't a problem, at least in our community. So we're still committed to represent the city as a whole, no doubt.
I got words for state representatives too. The public wants to see them too. The public wants to see their elected officials. They want to know what's going on. A lot of them feel uninformed, and I, I think our elected officials have to do a better job at that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Thank you very much for what you're sharing. As Councilwoman Borton just mentioned, we, we agree. We, we don't, we don't want the potential appearance of division that this could create. But in addition to communicating with your elected officials at the state level, always feel free as well to write in editorials to the media. We've, we've had some pretty frequent articles, pretty, pretty often articles are being written that aren't accurate as to what is being said, communicated by the city. So don't hesitate to write those as well, and your thoughts on, this, this is a big deal. It's going to affect this entire valley and, you know, Meridian, Boise, and, and Napa. And I know for me, it won't change how I'll go about things here, you know, in, in light of just wanting to make decisions, good decisions for the city as a whole.
Well, I hope, even if we, after we break up into districts, that you still take ownership of the city as a whole. I hope that continues, because that's really what the citizens want to see. They, they don't see lines, they don't see their neighbor living in another district. The streets all connect the entire city of Meridian, and that's what they want to see, that continuity. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, that was everyone.
That's everyone who signed up in advance, if anyone would like to provide testimony, if you'd like to come forward at this time. If you want, you got to come up here if you want to speak, so. Have you say your name and address for the record again?
All Eland 5127 North Assisi Avenue. Again, sorry, I'm just still in the process, but it's been a great learning experience, and I'm trying to prepare myself for an upcoming meeting, we expect, because of a giant apartment complex that's going to be built near our, our home, so I wanted to start attending. But I was just wondering, I, I think this would be addressed to you, sir, but about the law that was passed by state, I've only lived here for a year. Is, is that final? There's no getting around that, because I, I agree with a lot of the great points made by that gentleman. Is, is that final? There's no getting around that because I, I agree with a lot of the great points made by that gentleman. For me, when I, when I think about it, I think the same kind of thing, that, you know, we could have two amazing council members that live in the same district and I hate to lose one because they already care so much about the city because of something that the citizens didn't even know was being voted on. So is there any flexibility or is it, we have to make this change automatically?
Oh, Mr. Member of the council, so Mr. Elam, there really, there's no change that we can effectuate at the city level. So the state does carry the, carry the, the weight here. They've made this change. We did propose some changes in the 21 legislative session and those never got approved. So we don't really have a, a change and I don't know if there's any desire at the state level to revisit this particular issue again.
You have to be another vote at the state level to say, we don't necessarily need that after all, after citizens get involved, like that gentleman was saying.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly difficult to change state law without the legislative support. So, and it is very difficult on a lot of issues that can, for some reason, get really divisive to get the change. So we're doing the best we can. I mean, I, and this is just my own personal editorial comment and on behalf of the city, but I don't think it was accidental that no city in the state had districts. I, I don't necessarily think that was a desire that was asked from the city level. It really truly was a state conversation.
Yeah, it was interesting. I think it was you that mentioned nobody had ever requested that in Meridian, which blows my mind. I'm just curious, how many cities were affected by this new law requirement?
Three.
Just three?
Mr. Mayor.
That's my one.
I, I, I just have to speak up, Mr. Elam. I, I just, to be truthful, this was done. And since you're new to the city, politics occur everywhere.
Yeah.
The legislature is conservative. Our capital city is less conservative. And this was aimed at them. They had a number of council members from the same region of the city. So that's why it does, you cannot single out communities by name. So they picked the number 100,000. At that time, now Napa and Meridian has surpassed 100,000. So just to let you know how it works, that's how it happened. So.
Wow, that's good information. Thank you very much. I, being new to the process, but starting to be aware, you know, we, we love it here. Our family moved here and we're very thrilled to be in this community. And so now we want to kind of learn what goes on and I agree with what many of you have said. So thank you for your time.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Don't run away, sir.
Yeah, one more question.
First, I want to say thank you very much for coming as a new resident to our community. Much appreciated. I just wanted to say that the residents do have, if, if residents decide that they want their city to district, they do have a method in which they can go about that. So that's kind of what's being communicated is it's a little bit challenging to justify this law when none of the residents of any of the three communities that were affected were coming to their own cities and saying, hey, you really think we should be districted because we, and so just wanted you to know that. I also wanted you to know that the conversation about this has been going on for about four years. So this isn't something that is, the, the legislators were talking about this in 2018. They passed a bill that said cities over 150,000, that became an issue because it obviously singled out Boise. Then, then they, they amended that bill and it became 100,000. So this has been going on. So it's not that residents probably aren't aware of it. It's been in the news for a very long time. I just don't know that residents really got why they, it was necessary. Because if we're not understanding why it's necessary, certainly the average person isn't understanding why it's necessary. But, and the cities have really done their best to communicate with our legislators about how it will affect the cities and the residents and, and our concerns and thoughts about it and, and don't know that we were, were really heard in the manner that we hoped we would be. So, yeah, just wanted to give you that history as well as what they had shared.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. It's really fascinating to kind of learn how these things happen and, you know, and I, I agree with that gentleman that spoke and that I, I haven't met any citizens to really keep up with what's going on and even in the city level, very many. Where we live in our community, I just happened, my wife spotted a Facebook group that talked about a new development. And that's how I got involved because I thought, does anybody even know in our, in our community that they're going to put this right next to our area when there's only one lane each direction on this street that can't accommodate 450 new cars every day? And, and so we asked around the community and nobody had ever even heard that that was even being discussed. So it, to, to the gentleman's point, so many people don't really know what's going on. So it's good to hear. And I hope things, rules like that don't prohibit having great members across the board, just because of some lines being drawn. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present that would like to provide testimony on this item? If so, please come forward at this time. Say your name and address to the record.
Mike Hahn, 2134 East Summer Ridge Drive. How you doing? Hello. Thank you and good evening. Yeah, you know, to Phil's point, I don't think a lot of people even knew the map was being drawn. Like boom, it appeared, right? From a committee that was created by the mayor. So from my perspective, you know, you chuck the dice, you created the map, it is what it is. And I think you should just move forward with the map as it is. So that's that. Thank you.
Any questions? No questions. Is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony on this item at this time? Or anybody online that would like to provide testimony, use your raise your hand feature on Zoom. Okay, seeing no one, wishing to provide additional comment. Counsel, I know the intention is to leave this public hearing open for each of the subsequent readings or decision points, or if counsel wants an off-ramp at any point in time, from that standpoint. So do I have a motion to continue this public hearing? Or do we need a, do we need a motion to continue it, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me. Mr. Mayor, it would be on your August 9th meeting for a second reading automatic.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
Some thoughts maybe to continue to maybe take some of the public feedback about public engagement. I'm, I'm not sure what options exist, but particularly hearing from residents that would be impacted in District 1 and 2. If there's maybe some extra efforts the city could take to promote what's going on in those particular areas and invite public feedback from them would be helpful. I also think it's important, I, and I may have misheard you when you first presented this, Mr. Mayor, but I was under the impression there was going to be some direct communication to the redistricting commission about this proposed change. At least when I checked in with one to kind of get their feedback, they hadn't heard from anybody. So I just would invite that we reach out to the redistricting commission, make them aware of this, and I think also solicit their feedback as well.
All right, then with that, we will go ahead and move on to item four. Or do we, yeah, we don't need to do additional first reading in for action. Okay. All right, item four is a public hearing for East Ridge subdivision H 2022-0037. I will open public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the applicants, not my project, I'm here on behalf of Allen, just covering because they're requesting continuance because the applicant team couldn't, they didn't have their availability tonight. They're just requesting continuance to the August 9th hearing. Assuming they would have requested next week, but we're not having a meeting next week.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris. Also, they did not post for tonight, so it was not legally noticed.
Okay, so we can open the public hearing regarding that. They just asked me to continue it. So with that, do I have a motion to vacate? Item from the.
Mr. Mayor.
What's our action, Mr. Or Councilman Caver, if you know, Councilman Caver.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Before any motions are made, I, and perhaps we should have maybe chatted about this before we set the agenda. I don't know if there's people that are here that are able to testify and, and aren't going to be able to be here.
We can't open the public hearing.
I understand that we can open the public hearing, but I do think that we could poll the audience about the availability of being here at a future meeting. I think that, I, for me, before we set a date, I want to make sure that the folks that if they're here tonight, that they're going to be able to come back to provide testimony at, at a proposed evening.
Is there anybody here that was here for this item this evening? Or online, if you can raise your hand to indicate that that's the case? Nope, seeing no one, okay. Mr. Mayor.
So, Mr. Members of the council, what I would suggest to you is simply move this item to your next agenda. The, the noticing will get done appropriately for it, but we can't really take other actions since, again, it wasn't properly noticed for tonight.
So, Mr. Mayor.
That's my one.
You need a notice for that, or, I mean, a motion for that, or?
Move it to the next available agenda.
So, Mr. Mayor.
That's my one.
I move that we hold a public hearing for East Ridge subdivision H 2022-0037 for August 9th.
Have a motion second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, the ayes have it, and the item is moved to the August 9th meeting. Next item on the agenda is item five, which is public hearing for pickleball court subdivision H 2022-0025. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this next one is for pickleball court. It is a request for annexation of 4.96 acres of land, which is currently zoned R U T. They request the R4 zoning district and also a request for a preliminary plat, preliminary plat consisting of 14 single-family homes, or should I say residential building lots, and four common lots on approximately four and a half acres in the requested district. Typically, I don't discuss it, but there's about half an acre difference of the annexation area and the plat area. And that's because this abuts two public roads and zoning needs to go to the center line of the road. So that's where the additional area is. The site is located at the northeast corner of Joy Street and McMillan, as seen on this picture here. Joy Street runs right along their west boundary and is a public road. Subject four and a half acres currently contains a barn or other agriculture building or two. Previous home appears to have been removed according to the latest imagery. Subject site abuts two public roads, as noted. McMillan to the south, Joy Street to the west. Butting the north and east are two existing R4 developments, the Chenza to the east and Summerwood subdivision number two to the north. Subject property is designated as medium density residential on the future land use map, consistent with existing development to the east and the north. The proposal for 14 building lots and four and a half like acres of land constitutes a gross density of just over three units per acre, nearly the minimum density allowed within the medium density residential designation. So again, not pushing the density on per our comprehensive plan. Minimum building lot size is 8,000 square feet, which is the minimum lot size for the requested R4 zoning district. The adjacent developments are of similar density and lot size, which make the project consistent with the existing development. The existence of Joy Street along the west boundary, subject project should act as a transition towards the higher density approved further west at the corner of Blackhead and McMillan and with the underdeveloped properties in between them. Access is proposed via new local street connection to Joy Street, noted as West Reaver Capri. And there is no access proposed to West McMillan. Access to all proposed homes is from the new local street that ends in a cul-de-sac near the north boundary. No opportunity for a stub street exists because existing development did not provide one to this property. The applicant is required to dedicate additional right-of-way for McMillan and widen the paved surface area adjacent to the site or McMillan. The applicant is also required to reconstruct Joy Street as half of a 33-foot wide local street section abutting the site. A C H D has approved the proposed road connections and layout. And staff also supports the proposed road layout. Subject project is less than five acres in size, therefore the U D C does not require minimum amount of open space or amenities. However, the applicant is proposing some open space, which staff has analyzed. The applicant shows three main areas of open space. One, the required buffer along McMillan, an open space lot along the north boundary, which is lot 12, and additional grassy area in the southeast corner that's noted to hold a future gravity irrigation pond. The applicant should add an exhibit and more detail to the landscape plan that shows how this pond will be constructed and what it will look like to ensure compliance U D C standards, and there is an existing condition of approval regarding that. Within lot 12, along the north boundary, so that would be this one here. The preliminary plat notes that there's a pickleball court or a sports court. The applicant requested flexibility in the type of the sports court requested there. Therefore, the applicant, or say they did request that, staff did modify that DA per the commission recommendation to modify the DA provision. So originally I specifically stated a pickleball court because that's what was noted on the plat. The applicant wants flexibility on what kind of sports court, depending on what they end up doing. At the commission hearing, public testimony was only about the dust mitigation. I guess there was a neighbor that was concerned with just having the dirt out there and not having it wetted. Commission discussed that. They also discussed the difference of the height proposed of these homes to the existing. I mean, and whether the applicant had an intention to match the applicant, the actual home builder was here for the commission meeting and stated that they will try to match heights where they can. They also asked, are there lights planned around the proposed sports court at the north end? And the answer was no. And then there was also brief discussion on this project's location in relation to a project on the south side of McMillan that was denied. They, commission specifically noted that the differences were pretty large in both its size, density, and that this has no direct access to McMillan Road. Again, commission did note, recommend modifying that provision regarding the sports court. And these other things that the applicant requested, which were also noted. And so this is what's shown here, what is what's changed in the commission recs that were sent to council. There has been no written testimony for the project before the commission or after. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tamara Thompson with the land group. Our offices are at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, who is the property owner and who will, who is also the home builder. I do have a PowerPoint, but Joe pretty much has all the same slides that I would have for you. So I think I'll just go through with his and then if you have some specific questions, I may have him put mine up. So before you tonight is the annexation of just under five acres and a proposed zoning to R4 that R4 is consistent with the surrounding properties. This property is kind of landlocked. It has existing homes to the north and to the east and public streets on the south and the west. As Joe mentioned, the public improvements to those street frontages are required by A C H D. So road widening and sidewalks and landscaping will be constructed with the subdivision. We have 14 residential lots. They all have a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. We've aligned two existing homes to the north and to the east where possible. Some of those are kind of pie-shaped, so we can't make them exact, but we've tried to line them up one-to-one. And as Joe mentioned, there is not opportunity for cross-access or stub roads as all those homes are already, all those lots are already developed. This proposed development is consistent with the existing developments to the east and, and the north as far as lot sizes. This is logical and orderly expansion of the city and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Our proposed zoning is consistent with those surrounding properties as well. We have read the staff report and agree with staff's analysis and the recommended conditions of approval. And we respectfully request your approval tonight. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Hello. Thanks for presenting this. I just wanted to know more detail about the pond. Any kind of irrigation pond, I would just worry about like sitting water, mosquitoes, sometimes they're not done well. Could, could you give us some more detail about what is intended?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, the pond is in this location right here. This property does have surface water rights and with the surface water rights, they only get water once per seven days. So we have to create a pond in order to have the capacity for the neighbors to be able to, we'll do a pressurized irrigation system and in order to have that storage in order to, to hold that so that the people can sprinkler their lawns whenever they want to and not just every seven days. So there's enough capacity, it just doesn't come very often. There's that limitation. So we will, with the final plat, have the design for that. And we, we have done the calculations as far as the land area that's needed to have that storage. But the design, we will do with the final plat. I don't have a design for you tonight for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
Along those lines, is it in?
Along those lines, is it intended then that there's some type of aeration of the water to prevent mosquitoes? And then what is kind of your intended plan? We have one of these in our neighborhood, much to the frustration of mothers across our neighborhood as our young ones like to kind of climb in there and they get muddy and stuff like that when it's empty. What are your plans to kind of, one, manage it as a safety issue and reduce like the impact of this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, the, we, we design these quite often. And this one will have fencing around it so that it won't be easily accessible by children in the neighborhood. And as far as aeration, I don't have a good answer for you on that. If, if it, it'll, it'll depend on if they can and that kind of stuff. I don't, I don't know exactly how they're going to design that, but that'll be something that, that we can address and I can sure pass that on to them. But staff with the final plat will, we could have them be looking at that as well.
Yes, Joe.
Sorry, did Councilman Burns say something? I just wanted to clarify what the code does require. If there's going to be standing water, the aeration will be required or some form of it in order to help with the mosquito issue. So that's why I put it in the condition that we'll take care of that and make sure it complies with the code once they come back around with the final plat or, or building a lot. Joe, absolutely.
Also, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can we have anybody sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have anyone sign up in advance.
Okay, well, if there's anybody present that'd like to sign up, go and come forward at this time and you'll say your name and address for the record, be recognized for three minutes. You'll always have that opportunity.
Thank you. Paul Elam, I live at fifty-one, twenty-seven North Assisi Avenue. And this is actually the property that I came here tonight about. It's maybe one block from our community. We're in Bridge Tower West, which is right there, a little bit behind the Walmart on Ten Mile Road. Traffic is already a nightmare on that street, McMillan, and, and it's funny when you talk about districts, it doesn't really matter. Kind of like that gentleman said, we don't really care which district it falls in, as long as the council members are kind of hearing are, are interested in paving or whatever it is. But currently that, where they have that plan, there's only one lane each way on McMillan. And, and it's very congested, many hours of the day. You can barely even take a left or right off of Joy, which is the street that they indicate where that is. So I mean, I literally, we rode our bikes right by there. It's probably five hundred yards or so from where we live and and it is very congested. And so I would ask that, as well as other areas that they want to build on, and there's already another giant community going in about maybe one or two blocks west of there that's already has paved streets close to Black Cat. I would ask that the city or this company that wants to put in the development, that they do a study on the transportation impact of that area because already the roads are very crowded. And, and I'm sure there's a lot of other cornfields that people want to build on, but until they widen McMillan and you stick in other areas nearby, it's going to be a big problem for the existing citizens that have already purchased in that area.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
So I ask that they would delay this approval of this hearing until a study is done.
Thank you. Is there any else present who would like to provide testimony on this item? Everybody online, use your raise your hand feature. See, no one with the applicant like to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, to address the comments about traffic. As you know, A C H D has analyzed the project and has a staff report that they, and conditions of approval that they have that your staff has then attached by reference. So we have to comply with those conditions as well. With this development, we are widening the street in our, along our frontage, providing sidewalks in those areas. And for Joy, we are redoing half of that road section. So there's considerable amounts of, of improvements that are, that are going on there. But then we also pay our impact fees, which is the system that we're in. So this, this project is complying fully with the A C H D report.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Cavanagh.
Cavanagh, to that point, what's McMillan rated by A C H D? This proposed development?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I'm not sure what you mean by that rated as far as the letter. No, I don't, I didn't bring that report with me. Do you have that in front of you?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do not. I can pull it up, but I'm, I know McMillan is a constrained corridor, so widening it is not going to happen as far as I know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglen.
When you talk about why are you, are they doing a right turn lane into, from in front of your property and onto Joy? Or there's just an additional lane being put in on the right side?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Huglen, a right turn lane was, was not required at that location. What, but the edge of pavement is getting widened and then a detached sidewalk is, is being continued. It is in front of the properties immediately to the east of us, so it will continue to to and through our property to Joy Street and then turn the corner and it'll be the entire length of Joy as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
For commentary, so I can get back to you. A C H D staff report has rated better than E. So just for counsel and for you. It's not what I expected to see, so I thought it was important to hear that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just as someone who lives off of McMillan, just to pipe up. The traffic situation is so out of control on McMillan and the canal makes it so that widening it is just totally not feasible in the near future. I'm happy to see that this is R four and not a bunch of apartments. You know, I'd have a lot more heartburn if this was a lot higher density. I appreciate that the lot lines, you know, match up with the surrounding neighborhood, et cetera, but yeah, just felt like I had to say something as someone who experiences McMillan on a daily basis.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Under Councilman Borden.
I move that we close the public hearing on H twenty twenty-two zero zero two five.
Second motion.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
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 Post name, the ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I think relatively straightforward, small project. Sort of tucked in there. I agree with Councilwoman Schrader, seeing this as an R four is, is refreshing. McMillan is a challenge for this generation and the next generation, no matter what you put on it, unfortunately. But I think it's a, it's a well-designed, thoughtful plat, appropriately zoned. Appreciate the open space and some of the flexibility on the sports court. I think that's well taken as well, so. It just seems to be a pretty clear cut application. I'll make a motion that we approve H twenty twenty-two zero zero two five as presented in the staff report of July twenty-sixth, twenty-two.
I have a motion and a second to approve H twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two five. Is there a discussion? Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm in support of this request as well. I always try and look at an application, see how it enhances our community, and I think this one does. I think it's important because we've had a couple of people provide testimony that are newer to Meridian. Just a good reminder. City Meridian doesn't oversee our streets and roads. It's a personal frustration of mine is that we have to rely on staff reports from another agency. Or D A C H D, they view McMillan as better than E and E is an acceptable level of service. We're stuck in traffic. We sometimes use words that start with the letter F, maybe not the letter E when we're stuck in traffic. So I sympathize with where folks are coming from, but we have to somewhat rely on the traffic engineers for what that road can handle. I agree. I think this is a, a well thought out project. It's small. The R four is a perfect fit for this part of town, so I'm in.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglen.
Yeah, the impacts on the roads are negligible for a project like this. Person may not be aware that, you know, a few months ago, across the road, there was a major project planned, but there were certain items that council did not agree to on ingress, egress, some other impacts that it had that was denied, and it was a very large project, so. We just don't go about just any application that comes before us. We look at them thoroughly. And I also saw that the applicant agreed that they'll make sure they're doing dust mitigation. We'll take care of that concern that a neighbor expressed. So I'm in support of, supportive of this project as well.
Counsel, any further comments on the motion? If not, call, call it all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Byrne.
Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Huglen.
Aye.
Allies' motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is a public hearing for Pine Dell subdivision H twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 one. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Project tonight is for Pine Dell subdivision. Located just east, I guess, the southeast corner of Chesterfield number two. Just west of Ten Mile Road. Request before you tonight is for annexation and zoning of one point two acres of land with a request for the R eight zoning district. And a preliminary plat for seven detached single family building lots and one common lot on the one point two acres. There's been some miscommunication about how many lots, because originally this was proposed with twelve. Actually, it was proposed to me at fifteen and I said, good luck. And then he got it down to twelve and then we got it down to ten and then nine, and now we're at seven. This was remanded from you back to P N Z with the seven lot subdivision, which is now before you tonight. The, as I noted, the applicant has revised the plat multiple times to address current concerns voiced by both staff and neighborhood and as well as the commission previously. The applicant is proposing to construct detached, single family dwellings at a gross density of just over five point seven units per acre and an average lot size of approximately forty-four hundred square feet. Which previously with the nine lots, it was approximately thirty-two hundred. And a minimum lot size of four thousand square feet, and it was previously twenty-two fifty. The proposed use as a permitted use was in, within the requested R eight zoning district. Further, all of the existing homes to the west are also part of the R eight zoning district. The access is proposed via extension of West Newland Street, which is an existing residential local street abutting the west property boundary. It is required to terminate within the site as a full cul-de-sac to our dismay. Existing access is from a private access across from Ten Mile Creek that goes up to Pine. This access will be terminated upon development. A C H D has previously approved the proposed access with the additional condition that the radius be widened to fifty feet, which the applicant has said can be accomplished and we will verify that with the final plat. Staff is not concerned that it will be able to fit on the site. Ten Mile Creek runs along the entire east boundary and requires a hundred foot total easement, which is shown on this plat here. They're showing fifty feet from the center line of the creek. Which is per the irrigation district, fifty feet is on each side. It doesn't cover the buildable area of the property further. So due to the encumbrances on the property, both the irrigation easement and the cul-de-sac, staff has included D A provision requiring side loaded garages where possible. This type of design can force sorry, can force longer driveways to go deeper into the site, which allow for more off-street parking for the homes. Design also creates an opportunity for the living area of the home to be moved closer to the street as the living setback is twenty, or sorry, ten feet and the garage setback is twenty feet. So overall, that allows for more buildable area than is shown on the plat, which are the, it's kind of hard to read, but the little dotted lines are the applicant showing what the buildable area of each lot is. Staff does note that the building lots may not be wide enough to accommodate the required parking pad for side loaded garages. The applicant should continue to work with staff to mitigate these issues and revise the plat accordingly unless commissioner, council, remove staff's recommended D A provision that require this. That was one of, this is pretty much the only discussion point by the commission and staff at the commission hearing was can we make that more flexible? And based on commission's recommendation, I did revise that D A provision to allow the applicant and staff to work. And instead of requiring it on all lots, which again, seven divided by two doesn't work, but minimally three. I revised it to make it a little more flexible of just where it's applicable. Some areas just may not need it and may not be able to make it fit dimensionally. My understanding is that the applicant, the, the home builders were going to propose smaller-ish homes in order to help with some of these issues. There was one piece of public testimony, one piece of written testimony submitted after the commission hearing, and it just noted the same concerns that other neighbors had, which was just parking concerns in the neighborhood that exists already. And a question about whether Pine Dell will be part of the Chesterfield H O A as future residents will likely use their open space. That I do not have an answer for, but I will leave that to the applicant and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, questions for staff? Is the applicant with this this evening? Your name and address to the record be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Good evening. My name is Antonio Kunti, address seven, six, six, one, West Riverside in Garden City. What we have in front of you is a perfect infill project. This is one point two acres county property surrounded by city. Project started, like Joe said, with fifteen lots. It was an R fifteen type of zoning and you know, after going back and forth in a few meetings, we realized that that was not this. As it is, the lot right now, there's a mobile home on site that was going to be removed and it's been a sore spot for the entire neighborhood. I don't know if you had a chance to go out there. It's really sad looking area. Installing this cul-de-sac would help with fire truck turnaround. Right now it's just a deadened street. We provided, as requested, a path to travel, a walkway that will connect across the bridge. That is the current access to this property. And we'll connect to the railroad right of way. Which my understanding is going to be a future walkway for City of Meridian. So what we're here to ask for is for an R eight zoning. The R eight is the same as the property to the west. Seven lots with a cul-de-sac and and that walkway access to the common space within the right of way of Ten Mile Creek. The question regards to the side loaded garage. The challenge is, you know, like we said, small lots, someone we can do it. I don't see a problem with a couple of the lots, but others be challenging. We appreciate that you made a little bit more flexible. It allows us to work around this. If you can remove it at all, it would be great for the client, but I understand flexibility is better than a rigid line. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Mayor. Councilman Huglen.
Real quick, Joe, if we go back one slide to that. So sir, I just wanted to make sure the access to the parkway looks like it's in that northeast about one o'clock, one thirty, two o'clock right there.
Correct.
That's what you referenced earlier.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, if anyone wants to provide testimony.
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
If there's anybody present that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Seeing no one coming forward or raising their hand with the applicant, like any final comments?
It was easier than the last time. Well, thank you very much. Any further questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm happy to kick it off. I move that we close the public hearing.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
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 Post name, the ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm happy to kick off the discussion. I think it's a big improvement, you know, having followed the, the different iterations of this. I think it's a much better fit. It is a, a little bit of a tricky layout, as you've seen. And with that, after considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move that we approve, approve file number H 2022-0001 for today's hearing date as outlined in the staff report.
Have a motion of second to prove I am H 2022-0001. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt, Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Borden.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item seven, ordinance number 22-1986. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to Fernie subdivision, H 2021-0103 for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section nine, township three north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, and be more particularly described in exhibit A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the loan land use zoning classification of 6.304 acres of land from R U T to I L zoning district in the Meridian city code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22-1986 with a suspension of rules.
Have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 22-1986 under suspension of the rules. Is there a discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt, Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Borden.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Next item up is ordinance number 22-1987. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to Grayson subdivision, H 2022-0014 for annexation of attractive land situated in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section 29, township three north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, and be more particularly described in exhibit A and annexing certain land and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of 3.39 acres of land from R U T to R eight zoning district in the Meridian city code. Providing that copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Title, is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22-1987 with a suspension of rules.
Have a motion of second to approve orders, 22-1987 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt, Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Counsel, are there any other future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, saying by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Get better.
Good night.
You were kind of crashing there towards the end.
A little summer cold. I'll be okay. May night, guys.